This meeting of the Argonne Village Board. It is Monday, November 20, 2017, 5:01 PM. I'd like to call on me to order and request roll call, please.
Grenier?
Here.
Brethauer? Staton?
Here.
Bolling?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Udrow? Jacobson?
Here.
Thank you. Our next item is item three, the 2018 Village Budget. I would like to open the public hearing and overview of the 2018 Village Budget. Mike and Lisa, please.
Yep, thanks, Steve. There's a PowerPoint in the pack if you wanted to follow along. So, as always do, I just thank the Board members and the department heads for their input during the budget process, including Lisa, who's become a budget expert in the last five years, absolutely. We've held three budget meetings during the course of the fall. And I think, as Jerry and I were talking the other day, I mean, typically, we start talking about the budget in early spring, which seems early, but it, you know, we started doing that as we get ready for the budget process. On October 23rd, we had the last budget hearing, or budget meeting, excuse me. And then we adjusted it again. And I think we did it especially to qualify for the Expenditure Restraint Payment Program. And I thank the board for doing that. That should, you know, hopefully generate about $30,000 in the 2019 budget, which is good. And then there is a tax levy sheet, worksheet in the PowerPoint. And at this point, an average house, which is going from 257,000 to 275, would see an approximate increase of village taxes of about $75. There is, and not to pick on the police department, but I did a little analysis here. And, I mean, if you backed out the new police officer position, it'd be about $65, but also, the fire district is going about almost $60,000. So, right there, you know, it's $100,000 of new levy that we're providing, proposing to spend for public safety, which is, I think, a good thing, as the village is growing, so. In case somebody would ask you, why is it going up more than last year? And I think that's a good response. It's mainly over public safety. Last year, it went up about $52 compared to $75, so it is a little bit of an increase. If your house is not an average house, it's going up about $56, as example two shows you. And any questions on that sheet, you fray? Okay. And we list all the changes since the beginning of October that we made to the budget. Since the November 6 meeting, we, Lisa made some changes to the budget along with me. We had to allocate some TID closing funds to the general fund to help pull down the levy. We increased the TID 3 transfer out to TID 5, which that's the new TID. We added revenue and expenses for the motel purchase in TID 4. We added some revenues and expenses for Jefferson Crossing Project. Jeff will talk about this in more detail in December. The project of undergrounding and burying the lines is a little bit higher than we anticipated. We increased the debt proceeds in the Street Improvement Fund mainly for the extension of Perry Parkway next year. And then we added a software upgrade and mobile device in the water department that Jeff had forgotten to include in the budget when he presented it. So, any questions about that, about those? There's mainly transfers in and out that Lisa caught when you were finalizing the budget. Overall, the budget does some good projects next year, including, as I mentioned, extending Perry Parkway and relocating the Arway site. We are going to do a pretty big project of mill overlays next year. East Netherwood, North Perry Parkway, Waterman Street, Oak Street, East Richards, and Clover Lane. Clover Lane, Darlene?
Yeah. Good one.
A good one, yeah, I thought you liked that. Sidewalk projects on Wall Street and South Perry Parkway. The feasibility study for the West Side Bike Path Extension. As I noted, we're adding one full-time officer as of July 1st. Adding one full-time water and sewer employee. Purchasing a new leaf vacuum truck, which can be very helpful next year at this time, as you're seeing the leaves starting to pile up. And one of the things I wanted to mention to you was that we were able to do this without any, having any cuts in services next year. So, I think that's a good thing. We're continuing to fund the library's 2020 stuff plan for AV books and subscriptions. Excuse me. Provide a wage adjustment for village employees and purchase equipment for our emergency operations center. In 2018, general fund expenditures are increasing from about 5.4 to 5.7. And as we discussed, we believe the 18 budget will allow the village to qualify for expenditure strength payment in 19. We got good news where, even though state's revenue went down a little bit, we have a, we had a pretty substantial increase in highway aids. And we anticipate that to be occurring the next couple of years. I think we're done going backwards for a while because of the streets we're adding and the work we're doing, so, which is good. The budget continues the practice, which the board started back in '04, of not using fund balance for ongoing operations in the budget. It's always a big deal when we're on the call with Jim Mann and Moody's, when we're doing the borrowing, that we always... Balance. We are pleased to present the budget for consideration by the board. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to compliment the staff, the budget staff that actually worked on this, the department heads, as Mike already has, and the employees, because this process starts in January. I mean, I know we'll start revising this in January already. But it's just the way, the practical way it works. But when you look at all the things that are in this budget, the, all the things we're doing for streets and roads, I mean, there's a whole laundry list of street projects. And it also does a lot for public safety. I mean, we haven't added a patrol officer in a while, which is good. And we're adding a water and sewer employee. And we've got a new vacuum truck, so people, hopefully, people's leaves will disappear quicker. And then, you know, on top of all that, we still had enough latitude in this budget to give wage adjustments. So, it's a very good budget, and I'm pleased to support it. And let's hope the economy doesn't take a dip here, so that we can continue this practice. Thanks.
Thanks, Jerry. And I'd like to extend my thanks also to staff and Mike and Lisa for their work on the budgets. It goes on for a long time, like people have said, and you bring forward a good budget for our discussion, and we enjoy working our way through it in those three budget meetings, so, thank you. Any other comments with regard to the public hearing on the budget? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and go to item C, Discussion Possible Action. We're going to adopt a resolution number 17-36, Tax Levy in 2018 Budget. So, the recommended motion is to approve Resolution 17-36, adopting that budget and changes since the November 6 board meeting. So, looking for that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I would like to remind anyone who's watching or in the room that we did have three fairly long budget meetings. This is not a quick and easy come tonight, and you pass a $5.7 million budget. It's had a lot of discussion, a lot of time by staff going into it, so. Any further questions or comments? Okay, so we have the motion second to approve Resolution number 17-36 regarding our budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The fullest motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four, Public Appearance. Item A, Discussion Possible Action, Identifying Amount of Borrowing for the New Library, the 2018-2022 Village Capital Improvement Plan. I would like to welcome library board members, and we will do a roll call in a minute. I'm going to ask that staff over here, go out there, and library board members come over here, please, so it's a separate and distinct group, and people will recognize that you are here. So, please join us. Begin. On the library board, so I'm going to ask Peggy to do our roll call, please.
Kiri Santui Shuda?
Peggy talking to the mic.
Brian Bustler? Gene Carpenter?
Here.
Albert Kaster?
Here.
Mary Stats here. Kyle Severson?
Here.
Jennifer Nelson?
Here.
Thank you. And again, welcome. We're pleased to have you here as we work our way through this process. So, item two, Background. The Memorandum of Understanding of the MOU Ad-Hoc Committee has indicated important first step in developing the MOU is to have the village board identify the amount of borrowing for the new library. If the village board designates the amount of borrowing for the new library, the board will be asked to adopt the 2018-2022 Capital Improvement Plan at a future meeting. So, that's where we're at right now. And I would ask, item three, for our village finance advisor, Jim Mann is here to review the November 13, 2017-2018-2022 Capital Improvement Planning information. So, Jim, welcome. Come to the microphone, please, and enlighten all of us.
Good evening. Hopefully, you all had, you had an opportunity to read through the memorandum, similar to what we had provided previously. We tried to break out the capital improvement plan and the impacts that it would have. You've got basically your existing debt that's outstanding, the capital improvement plan dealing with the general infrastructure of the community. And then we had the, kind of, the library broken out. And this version, in terms of talking with staff, we reduced the overall initial borrowing to $5 million, but then provided an ability for you to kind of see what an index would look like for every 500 additional $1,000 that you would borrow. So, basically, what it boils down to is the library itself is at $5 million. It is going to have an impact in the, and I know a question may be out there, why does it kind of bounce around in '21, '22, '23, '24, '25? Why does it bounce around? And the reason that it bounces around is because if you look at the actual spreadsheets, we're not necessarily solving for a level debt service scenario for any of the borrowings. We're solving for what the levy looks like overall, for the, for all aspects, the existing debt, the capital improvement plan, plus the library. So, when we structure the debt, we're playing around with the numbers to fit them into what your existing payment structure looks like, what you, what future payments are going to be on some of the future debt issues, to try to manage the overall levy, so it doesn't spike up and then drop back down. So, it looks like the library is spiking, but it's really, when you look at it for the overall levy that you're going to be asking the taxpayers to cover, we're trying to moderate the increases along the way. And so, that's why that looks a little funny. But basically, you're looking at a $5 million project is going to have an impact, on average, probably of around $90 on the average taxpayer. I mean, that's just a kind of an average look at it, but the way we've structured the debt, it doesn't quite show up that way. And so, you know, if you add an additional $2 million to take it back to the $7 million, which I think was the original number we were looking at, you're going to end up adding about $27.5 to the average taxpayer's tax bill to cover that extra $2 million. And that's why we tried to break it out, so that for every $500,000, it's about 2.5 cents on the tax rate that you're going to impact the taxpayers, that they're going to pay over a long period of time. We've done this structure with only looking at 20 years. We did not look at a 40-year structure at this point. Until you really decide the direction you want to go in terms of the actual structure, we can always come back and revisit that at some point to determine whether you want to go to a longer period of time. But this plan sets forth all the capital needs for the village, your existing payments, as well as the library moving forward. And I think it is a generally manageable plan. It depends on how far you want to go with the library. I don't think, even if you went to the extent of adding and making it a $7 million library, I don't know that you're going to be in a position where you're overburdening your taxpayers at this point. I think what's put together, and while there's an increase, when you look at the second page of the attachment, and I'm going to focus in on the blue columns on the right-hand side of the page. When you look at your overall debt service, while the net debt service, which is what's going to be levied to the taxpayers, is going up significantly, you're looking at an increase on an annual basis. We're starting out in 2017 where the average taxpayer was paying about $320 for debt purposes, which is all your capital improvements. If we build the library at $5 million and do all the capital improvements that are included in the plan, that maximum is about $526. It's a $200 increase, but you're getting a structure that's going to last a lot longer. You're getting an asset for the community, and you're also maintaining all the infrastructure that you've got to maintain. And that comes with a cost, so there are always costs associated with doing that. From my perspective, and I will be very honest, I'm not the one that pays the taxes in the community, so it's easy for me to say it, but a $200 increase for all the items that you have included in your capital plan is not, I don't think, overly burdensome. And if you were to increase that another $27.5 to go to a $7 million library, or at least the village's portion of the library, $7 million, I don't think that that would be above and beyond what you could realistically do in terms of burdening your taxpayers. Now, again, I'm not the person that has to write the check out. I'm not the person that has to answer the telephone. When the complaints come in, that's your pay grade. Unfortunately, I'm very happy I don't have to pay those taxes. But I pay my own, and I think they're worse than yours. So, I don't, you know, I don't know how much more detail you want me to go into the actual cost. And I know there was one other question that may come up in terms of, what's the, what's the impact of the land purchase on the taxpayers? And again, that dollar amount fluctuates based upon the amortization that was included. The first year, it's about $100,000 on the overall levy. It drops down to, on average, probably, in the 20-year period, to closer to about $50,000 or $60,000 a year. So, it's not, it's a relatively small dollar amount. And when you consider that as an overall piece of the debt service levy, it's a few percent of the overall debt service levy at this point going forward, so it's not a significant dollar amount. I can do the quick math, if you want me to tell you exactly what it is on the average home, if I can find my calculator. So, the, if it's the $100,000, which is the first payment for next year, it works out to be about $28. If you go down to the average, which is about $50,000 or $60,000, it's going to be about $14 on an annual basis is what the land is going to cost the taxpayers.
So, then, Jim, if you look at your memo, you said that at the last paragraph that if you borrow $5 million on an average house, it's $77 per year. So, I think, I had a question, so if you took, say, let's say it's $15 just to round it up. So, it'd be $15 plus the $77, and give you approximate cost for the land and the building?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask a question? So, Jim, so, when you bumped it up, when we're talking about the $7 million library, is that like around $230 you're thinking in increase? Is that including all of the, like, current borrowing for all of our other capital improvement plan projects?
Yes, that's correct.
So, $230 a year?
$230 increase in terms of the taxes. And you've got to remember, that's over time. It's not a, it doesn't go from $300 today to $530 tomorrow. That's over the 10-year period of the planning cycle. It's, in fact, you peek out at that, the last year, which is 2025 is when the debt hits.
Yeah, so in 2025, it's up to $526.
Right. And what, and if you look at those blue columns again, and you look at the first blue column, or the third one from the right, you'll see that the, we try, and this is where we try to manage the increases, so they're not big increases on an annual basis. The biggest is probably from 2018 to 2019. And again, these are numbers that we can play with. And if you give me a target, you say, you know, we really want to keep our increase to something less than $30 or $40, we can try to model that. Now, understand, though, that the more we push principal off, the greater the cost is in terms of overall interest.
And this model, is that $5 million or $7 million?
This is at $5 million at that point. And that's where, if you add that extra $2 million, that's where you get to that roughly $230 increases versus a $200 increase. But we tried to manage the overall increase on an annual basis, so it wasn't huge to the taxpayer. You know, sometimes when we put these plans together, we'll look at a structure like this and just say, we're going to have level principal and interest payments, like it would be a home mortgage for the 20-year period. And we're just going to jump into that. We tried to manage it so that it wouldn't have a shock effect, because if you had $5 million or $7 million in one year of debt, and you just had level payments, you'd see a spike in the taxes in one of the years. And that's when you folks end up getting nasty phone calls.
Well, and I think it's relative, when you're saying, you know, a tax increase of $100 or $200, you don't think is an undue burden. Historically, at least since I've been on the board, we've tried to keep the tax increase, like, to 50, $75 per person, or, I mean, per average house. So, bumping it up to $200 might not seem like a big deal to you, but I think it would to the community, because that's a three-fold increase.
Excuse me, Jeanie, I just want to also offer the fact that that doesn't include our annual budgetary change. You know, like, this year, I think we had a $75 increase.
Yeah, so, so, you're just talking, right, you're just talking about debt, right?
Right.
Not operations.
Well, okay.
So, I'm just, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to it. I'm just saying that it's, it's a big responsibility as an elected official to say, we are now going to substantially increase taxes on citizens for a good cause, for a new library, but we need to, I just, I just, I kind of disagree with your comment, Jim, that it's not an undue burden, because I think it might be in this community.
My statement, though, is, and I'm back to that statement, it's not a one-year increase.
Yeah.
It's over, it's over a period of time. And so, the annual increase is something much less. If you look at those blue columns, from a year-to-year basis, and I understand this is just the debt picture, from 2017 to 2018, it's a $25 increase. From '18 to '19, it's $62. And those are the numbers that are going, that's what you're going up to get to that $230 mark.
Yeah, I get that.
So, it's not, it's not, you're not doing that in a single year. If you had to jump that in a single year, if you had any other increases...
We'd be getting recalled.
Well, I don't know that you're going to get recalled. I mean, part of this is, you know, how badly does the community want the asset that you're going to build? And if the community has the backing, it's much easier to increase the taxes right away, because they're backing and they're seeing they got the bright, new, shiny library. And if their taxes go up, they make the connection. But if you spread that out over time...
I get it.
Sometimes you lose that connection, and when you say, well, your taxes went up because of the library, well, you built that three years ago. And so...
Or 10 years ago.
Or 10 years ago. So, that's something you've got to be very cautious about. And this plan, I think, puts it together so that those increases for the debt side, managing not only your existing payments, all the capital improvement needs to just do the general stuff for the improvements for the village, plus the library, it's in that manageable range where you're not having a huge increase in a year. And yes, if you've got a couple of years in there where, if you've got an operational increase, you're going to be north of $100 for that overall increase.
And this is at $5 million? I mean, directly, we want to build a $10 million library, right?
Yeah, so, actually, the original number was $8 million. That's what we received from the library board. And I got to make one point here, so that, I should have said this at the beginning. So, when, the very first time you, the board saw Jim's analysis, that's when Lisa and I provided the board with a, the CIP, the request from the department heads, without us looking at it. We just said, here it is, and that's why it was such a sticker shock. So, remember what we did? We took the CIP and we said, our goal was over the next six years with just a borrow, excluding the library and the seniors that are, just to borrow for the debt. So, that's kind of matching the debt that's falling off. So, one of the things that we go forward on this, future boards, at least for the next five or six, seven years, will have to try to, as much as we can, stay disciplined within that debt service level.
Yeah.
That'd be important as we move forward, so. It's hard to control that, just projects come up and...
Well, it's hard to do that, too, when we have an election on this board every year, when we have two or three people up for election every year.
Yep. But we're going to, I mean, I think, as I said, I complimented the department heads, you know, in the 18 budget. They, I said to the chief and to Jeff, you know, you get $20,000 for equipment. That's what they submitted. I mean, they were very good at doing that. And so, I mean, that's what we have to do as much as we can every year, just trying to be disciplined about it, so. But I think, I think the question is, yeah, what, when is the comfort level for the board going forward? You know, debt service and annual operations, as Jerry just mentioned about, what is the total? What is a comfort level?
Well, I think it's obviously going to have to be higher than what we have been comfortable with in the past.
Yeah, and actually, in Jim's defense, he said way at the beginning, in a community this size, if you're going to build an 8 million, you're going to borrow $8 million for a library, your taxes are going to go up. There's this, unless we completely froze every other debt in the village, we didn't do any road projects or anything, and just built the library, we could probably have a flat, but obviously, we can't do that, so. So, if you're going to build a library, your taxes are going to go up, unfortunately. Or fortunately, if you think it's worthwhile.
Other thoughts from trustees or comments from library board? Feel free to speak up if you'd like, to Mary.
I'll just make a comment that even at $8 million, we're still short of the space needs assessment that was done in 2016, which has the library needs as greater than 35,000 square feet.
And just a reminder, that was by 2030, not right now. So, that's out there ways as far as, I mean, we talked about that, too, and also at the MOU meetings, that there may be ways to build this and build it, able to add on, which I know makes people nervous, and such as, will it ever happen?
And there was also some question if we built the library at least at that estimated size, that there may be other municipal tenants who need that space at certain time periods while everybody else is shifting around.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to say, Steve, if you don't mind, I don't envy the position that the village board is in. We need to weigh a lot of things, the tax burden on the community versus the upside of having a new library with community rooms and different activities and programming that they cannot currently provide under, not only the current infrastructure, but with the current levels of staffing and whatnot. I would like to just challenge the village board, as you guys are thinking this through, to think about what type of community we want to be. And I think the village, considering the library, I'd like to think that the library would be a priority for a number of reasons. Libraries have always been advocates for those who need it. They're advocates for lifelong learning. They support people who need access to technology and learning and books. They're a continuation of the education system, programming. And there's been a lot of changes around what a library means to a community. And I'm not sure that everybody has a full grasp on that. But libraries are, they're becoming a lot more than just a space where people go to check out a book and talk to a reference librarian about what they're studying. And it's a lot more than just reading time. It's access, it's equity and equality, and there's so many benefits that come to the community by serving those needs. So, you know, as you're thinking this through today and in future meetings, or however this looks, just really want you guys to think about, do we want to support? And at what level do we want to support that? And I believe that the, what Mary's talking about and what the survey that we had... um, the, the survey that we had done before about the needs, right? That was built keeping up with other communities within Dane County who are supporting uh, within reasonable levels, and not going overboard, but some of them are really nice facilities, so, right? Again, there's a balance there. Um, but they're supporting those needs within their community. And I, I would love to live in a community that, that steps up to the table at an equal level, um, and provides those level of services.
Good, thank you. Other comments from library board or trustees or questions?
Actually, I have some questions for Jim or staff. Um, I'd like to walk through some numbers again.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, we've tossed around a lot of numbers here tonight, Jim. Um, so, for, and I'm just using this number because this is the number that's in front of us.
Mm-huh.
To build a five million dollar library, what is the debt service for that?
Total debt service?
Yeah.
Uh, it is seven million, two hundred.
No, no, I mean, the annual, um, payment.
Um, well, on average, or.
Yeah, average.
Average is probably, uh, three hundred and, three, three hundred and fifty thousand, or sixty thousand.
How much does that break down to for the, uh, average taxpayer? Average house in town?
Oh, you're making me do math again.
When you, and when you say debt service, you're talking about interest, right?
Yeah, principal and interest.
Yeah, yeah, just to, so that people watching know what that means.
Right, thank you, yeah.
It took me a while to figure out the lingo.
So Carrie, feel free to join the library board over here, there's a chair, so, you're welcome.
I don't think I did very good math. Hundred and one dollars.
Okay, so that's a hundred and one dollars. And then, the lot is, you said fifteen dollars? The, the real estate that it's going to sit on?
Uh, yeah, on average.
Fifteen dollars, so, basically, that's a hundred and sixteen dollars right there.
Yes.
And then, of course, Mike, we have our, our annual increase this year is seventy-five dollars. So.
Which, which includes, that does include debt service.
That includes debt.
If you go back and look at that, that love you worksheet, we sort of list that out.
Yeah, so we're over two hundred dollars. If we, say we had the library now, that'd be two hundred dollars, so. That, uh, I don't know how many residents feel that's justified, but that, that's the decision before us, I guess. Do we want to pay that? And then that's only a, a five million dollar library. And what I'm hearing is, um, and that would double, wouldn't that double the size of the current library at five million?
Um, I mean, again, if you're using two fifty per square foot, yeah, approximately twenty, yeah.
So that's double. Okay, that just helps me, um, attach some numbers to the concepts. Thanks, Jim.
Uh-huh.
Is the current library seventy-five hundred square feet? Do I remember that correctly?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, okay.
And I did, actually Nikki helped me out, she verified that, um, when the, the library board, uh.
Um, so, is okay by talk?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so one thing that I keep going back and forth with is that, um, so I'm on the library board, so obviously, I'm committed to the library. When I ran for reelection in April, I ran on this platform that I wanted to do two things. I wanted to extend South Prairie Parkway, pass the ice rink, and get to Janesville, and I wanted to build a new library in two thousand twenty. And so I'm like, I'm very committed to that. And personally, I love libraries, they make me happy. I like going to the Oregon Library. Um, I love the community aspect of it, and so I really want to build a new library. And then on the other side, I have people tripping in my ear from the community saying, um, I don't want to pay another two hundred dollars in taxes. So I'm trying to weigh that, I'm trying to figure out, how can we build a new library and still have the support of the community? And so when, when I'm on the library board, it's really easy to get caught up in the, yeah, the cheerleading of let's build a new library. And I think that's where all the library board folks are too, right? And then when I'm sitting here on this side of the table, I have the tripping in my ear of, we need to do it in a responsible way to the taxpayer. So that's where I'm kind of stuck, and I'm sure Jim probably appreciates that too. I don't know if you guys are in there, or if you're in all one camp or the other. But it's like, you know, it's like the devil and the angel on the shoulders.
Yeah.
So I'm, so what I want to say is, I'm committed to building a new library, but I want to, I want to build the best, biggest library that we can for the amount that the community is willing and happy to pay for. Does that make sense? And I don't, do we have a sense of what the community is willing to pay for? I guess that's the data that I don't have.
Yeah, that's kind of the unknown. I, I, I'm in the same position you are, I'm not on the library board, I was at one time. But as a thirty-six-year educator, I have a strong belief in supporting libraries. Um, I want to go forward just like you do, but you've got that person on both shoulders, one saying, yeah, let's get this done, and the other saying, don't spend too much. So that's the challenge we have, is, uh, what's, what's the right amount to go forward and get the type of facility that was talked about earlier? And, um, still, still keep the taxpayers in a position where they're okay with it. There's not a magic answer. Yeah, Nikki, you'll need to come to microphone, please.
All right, now I'm working.
Now you're on.
Um, thank you. Uh, so I wasn't sure, um, whether or not initially I was going to go ahead and share this information, but it sounds like you're asking for something along these lines. Um, this is absolutely not a scientific study, it's called Facebook. Um, but, uh, I did post on the library's website, um, Friday evening, um, asking the community, what would, they would like to see in a new library? Um, you know, are they looking for meeting space, program room, maker space, what kinds of things? And I tried to emphasize that it's not cheap, it's going to cost money. Um, you all are going to be, um, deciding some important things here. Um, and, uh, you know, they need to be aware that that, that has an effect. Um, so I just printed out the comments that are on our Facebook page right now, in case you're interested in reading them. I think that there's something to find helpful.
Yeah, I read those, and those were really, um, those were really good. I liked them a lot. Yeah, okay, cool. I'm so lonely over here. Yeah, and so, um, but one, and one of the things I'd like to say about this is that it's really easy for me to go onto a Facebook page, say, yeah, I want a new library. And then when I put a comment in there saying, are you willing to pay an extra two hundred dollars a year for it in your taxes? I'm, I'm, that's what, I'm wondering, what is the response to that?
So I can say, when I was out knocking on doors, running for the seat, um, the majority of people that I spoke to were very enthusiastic about the, um, library. And they see it more, kind of going along with what, I forget your name on the end?
Kyle Severson.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Sorry, terrible with names. Um, kind of like what you were saying, is they see it more of a, not just a library, but it's a community center. It's kind of, you know, a place where we go for all manner of things, be it kids' activities, learning, cake pans. Um, and, uh, you know, I did, they were concerned about price, obviously, but it was, it was more of like, this is something we have to do. This is, this is something we want. Um, and it was, uh, yeah, it was overwhelmingly enthusiastic about it, and, and so that was my experience. I mean, you know, I didn't put dollar amounts out there, but.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Also, the other thing I always have to think of is that usually, the people that talk to you are the people who are complaining about something. Um, I, I don't know if this happens to everybody else, but the calls I get are the people who are angry with something I've done. Like, have I ever gotten a call saying, wow, thanks for voting that way? No. I only, I only get the calls from the people who are unhappy. So, anyone wants to give me happy calls?
Jeanie, I, I promise to make a happy call.
I'll call you happy.
With the government library board.
If you want to go randomly knock on somebody's door on a Sunday afternoon, I think they'll give you a lot, a lot of interesting information.
I just have a comment to make. I, I think it's a nice idea to build this big library, but I think too, to keep the price down a little bit. Of course, I'm from another, uh, uh, set of people, uh, uh, we're retired and, uh, live in our own home, and, um, each, each thing now, you know, with, with the price of this, this, and then our, our school, in addition to our school and our taxes going up, it's really hard for, uh, retired people to live here, because it, you know, it, it's really going to be out of hand. And, and I've heard the comment that we, we've had seniors that are moving out of town because of, of taxes. And, and I don't want to hear that. I, I, I like Oregon, and I, I've lived here a long time, but, um, I want to, I want to see you build a library, but we want to do it at a, a fair price.
I think we're all committed to a new library. I, we've been discussing this now for months, more than that probably. And I think it started with the, um, what, the event last summer when we were downstairs?
Civic campus plan.
Civic campus plan. And, um, the thing I keep going back to is, you know, that, I know the library board is concerned with the library, but we've got a group concerned with a new senior center, we've got a group concerned with a new youth center, and as Jim alluded to, and Darlene now, and I think everybody here, we have to be very careful not to price people out of town as we're walking through these projects, because we're, we made a commitment to do a new senior center in the near future. Um, so, I, um, I'm not sure where, where we're going to be when we get done with this discussion, but I, you know, I, I know for a fact we're not going to decide tonight, but I, I hear, like Jeanie, I hear from a fair number of people in town. And, you know, of course, when you look at my white hair, that, those are the people I generally hear from. And, you're laughing. But, uh, it, the, the, everybody, you know, everybody likes the idea of a new library, and I, I embrace it too. And I agree that we need a, a meeting place in town, more than just a library. And the question I have is, how do we get that? How do we get there and make it affordable to the average taxpayer, so they don't have to leave town? You know, we're doing a, a food pantry in town to help the less fortunate. Well, on the same token, we can't do an expensive library and drive more people to the food pantry. So, um, I don't know who made the comment. Mr. Severson, I think, said he doesn't envy our position on the board. Well, I don't envy my position on the board right now. Um, but anyway, that's, that's kind of the dilemma I face, and that's why I wanted the numbers. You know, and I'm, I just added up the rough numbers that Jim gave me, and I'm looking at over two hundred dollars in a year. Increase, that's just the increase. So it, uh, the decision we have to make now is that feasible. And, uh, I know we won't make it tonight, but at least this has been a good discussion for me.
So other questions or comments from library board? I don't want you to feel like we're not giving you a chance.
Well, I apologize because I was late, so.
Your, your excuse.
Um, I, I do, I have a, a couple of comments, and I have a question. Um, the comments go to pricing people out of town and, um, the food pantry. I, it, first of all, as far as the food pantry goes, as I see it, the people that we're building that food pantry for are, are some of the library's main customers. That's who uses the library, is, is, so, is the folks on the lower end of the spectrum, and it's the most important for that group of our community. Um, although I have to say, I'm a library lover, I, I, that was one of the first places I, I went when we moved to town. Um, but as far as pricing people out too, I'm not sure if you look at the whole Dane County, where your friends are moving, Darlene, because, um, you know, we looked at the other libraries in the area, and they're all much nicer than ours. Um, so, I mean, I guess if people are retiring, they're not moving to Madison, that's for sure.
They're moving to Stoughton.
Okay.
Yes.
So that, thank you for that. Um, and my question though, has to go to, uh, the numbers in this latest report, because a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, at one time, we were looking at maybe amortizing at least the building portion of this over forty years. And now, this latest round is back down to twenty. And there was something, Mike, do you remember, there was something about some kind of, uh, grant or some kind of program where we could do that?
So, so Jim, uh, Jim kind of mentioned that when he did his presentation.
Yeah, and I missed that, of course.
So, so he just said, at this point, till, till we, we really focus on an amount, um, what Jim was saying maybe two minutes ago was that, you know, possibly you could do urban, urban, United States Rural USDA, I get those.
United States Department of Agriculture.
Thank you.
Rural Development Program.
Yeah, so you could use that for the building for forty years, and, and do the soft costs and everything at, at twenty.
Okay, so I mean, it seems like, and I understand that you, you're, you're just doing scenarios here, but, but wouldn't it be helpful to have that scenario run, to see what the numbers would look like, were we to do that?
So, so the, what the thing is, is that if you, so right now, the, the spacing study says that the building should be thirty-five thousand square feet at two thousand thirty.
Mm-hmm.
So if, if the village doesn't build one that size in two thousand twenty, you would not want to take out a forty-year loan on the building, because then in ten years, you're, you're expanding the building. So I think you really do have to, in some respects, narrow down how much money you're going to borrow. Because if you're going to end up expanding the building in ten years, you don't want to take a forty-year bond out on the building.
But if you, but it's sort of like, which is first, the, the chicken or the egg, you know? I mean, how, how long you borrow for changes how much you can borrow. It's just like when I go to buy a car, you know, am I going to do a three-year loan or, or a six-year? You know, and, and that changes my payments drastically. So don't we kind of need to know that too? Wouldn't that be helpful for you all in finding a way to do this affordably? And feeling comfortable that you're doing it affordably? That's just my question.
We can run any scenario you ask us to run.
I would, I would just ask, um, Carrie, and obviously, you're not at all these meetings, so you don't have all the background. But I remember a couple of meetings, we talked about, we figured out what the interest would be on that forty-year loan.
Uh-huh.
And we just didn't feel comfortable spending that much on interest. I mean, it was, it was astronomical, and we just thought, better to do it in twenty years and pay, bleed a little bit more in twenty years than to stretch out, you know, the death march.
Sure, which is the other trade-off on, on taking a longer.
Yeah, there were several of us, I remember Jenna in particular, and me, were like, we looked at that interest number, and we're like, that is not, as an elected official, I can't make that, I, I can't do that to taxpayers.
And Doug had, had an issue with it way back when initially.
So that's kind of why that option went away. We're trying, we're trying to be more responsible with the interest payments.
And, and I will say, um, I know we're still talking about this with the MOU committee, but at this point, we're ac, the staff is actually backing off of, of thinking of putting another municipal operation in the library. So it's going to, I think it's going to make it just simpler, the library's going to go in, and we're going to find a different way of handling, uh, other operations.
So that was, that kind of was, and I don't know if this is the right time for this question, so I can table it for later, but, um, when I'm thinking, if we have a senior center, we need to, we're looking at building, we're looking at doing a new youth center, it kind of, I realize the library will probably stay separate, but for those things, and at, at one point, there was talk of a village hall. It sounds like the makings of just like a new municipal building that has multiple uses and houses multiple different functions and departments. Have we explored that option? Because it.
Yes, we have.
Okay. That, that was a question.
Back in twenty-ten, we did a, a community survey, because one of my ideas was to actually, you know, ask the community, build a, you know, go onto the west side of the village, buy property from a developer, and, and build a municipal facility. But you'd have a, maybe even a new police station, and a village hall and everything. But you'd have a, maybe even a new police station and a village hall and everything. Seventy-five percent was, that people that responded, absolutely not. They wanted everything to remain downtown, all the village operations.
And there's no way to fit those things downtown?
So, we tried, we tried to buy the bowling alley to do the senior center and the library and the bowling alley did not want to sell it to the village.
Right, but.
You're, you're talking about a large campus and you would, and you would build that with, with future expansion.
Okay.
And so you can add to that downtown.
And there's not room on the church, old church property to do that.
Yeah.
But no, the idea was that we would build something on the west side and then you would then sell all the property the village owns downtown to redevelopment. But that went nowhere during, in that community survey. It wasn't even, it wasn't even a 50, it was like 70, I think 70% was against, we were opposed to that.
Agreed or strongly agreed, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, that was the item having the most support on the survey and that, almost 500 people responded to that.
And at that, that time, so the main opposition was it being on the west side, right?
They, they, no, the main, I mean, that's where we, where we would probably do it, or possibly their side of 14, but people wanted the village operations to stay downtown.
Right.
That's kind of what.
And we didn't have the church property on the radar at the time. Um, did we, or is there a possibility of like, and I don't know how this would go, but, um, just throwing it out there. Putting it where like the library and senior center, is that big enough? And then, okay.
And we need the bowling alley because that land is not buildable without extreme expense.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a great question because I think we thought with the bowling alley, we, well, you'd be putting probably a four-story building in there, but you possibly could have put everything in there. But then you really, then there's really no place for expansion at some point. But, so the village would have had to acquire almost the entire block across the street. So, when we hired Vanderwalde to do the civic campus plan, they, they reached out to all the property owners downtown and there were very few people that were even interested in, in talking to us about something. We talked to the lodge across the street here and we thought, well, if we bought the whole block, we could do something, but it's not going to happen.
Thank you.
No, good question.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Phil.
Jeannie had mentioned earlier about the, the Library Board being really, you know, excited and being cheerleaders and, and, and I do believe that's true, right? Obviously, we're here because we, we're advocating for, for the library and, and the library system here in town. I can't speak for everybody, but we all probably are affected differently by tax rates as well. And I just want to acknowledge that, that's been a, a key point of conversation is, is understanding what the impact is going to be on the community and that was talked about before we made a, a formal recommendation to the village board. And so, as you guys were just talking, I, I went on my phone and I was searching mill rates for local communities. And the latest numbers that I found were from 2016. So, I'm, I'm not sure what has changed over the last couple of years. But as far as I could tell here, the mill rate per $1,000 for Oregon was $19, or, yeah, $19.99, if that makes sense.
So, that, that's the net rate. That's, that's everyone, our, our tax rate's about $5.40. And we actually have the third lowest tax rate in Dane County for village taxes.
And, and that's what I was kind of looking at here. You know, Darlene was talking about Stoughton and, and I'm looking at other, uh, area communities. As far as this data was concerned, it seemed like we were on the low end, in fact, the far low end from a mill rate standpoint.
That's correct, yep.
And I know that there's a lot of people who live in this community who think that they'd like to have services that are equal to others within Dane County who have, you know, their jobs are in Madison like many of ours are and, and, you know, want to have similar levels of, of expectation when they use their, their, uh, their village or city or whatever it might be, um, assets. And so I, I just wanted to, to point that out. It doesn't seem like we're, it seems like we've, you guys have done a, an amazing job of keeping the mill rate down. And I understand that, that the library could change that to some effect. But it doesn't seem like we're putting our, our village in an abnormal position by looking at, uh, a library upgrade of, of what we had recommended. And, uh, just, you know, wanted to add another data point to the conversation.
I appreciate that, Kyle, and I was thinking how to bring up that we have that, one of those lowest tax rates without signing defensive, but I don't want to do that, but I think the board and staff have done a good job over the years of keeping us there and, uh, now there, no matter where people live, the increase in taxes, why some people can't afford it.
Right.
You know, I don't, I don't know if that's a lot of people in, in Oregon, but clearly there's going to be some in every community. I think we have done a good job over the years, so, you know, that always brings us back to what, what do we think we can add to this for the library going forward and, and that's what we've got to work our way through. So, one thing that hasn't been talked about, and maybe we're not ready tonight yet, but that's, uh, at some point in the, in the future, would be fundraising, as far as what's the projected amount and, uh, how does that tie into the library? Do you have to raise a set amount before we borrow or, uh, is, is it, do we kind of get an idea of what you're going to raise and then see how that fits in and what that does and so on? So, uh, I know the, the people in the MOU group have talked about that a little bit and the feasibility study for that. So, there'll be more coming forward than that as time goes on, but that's another factor to, to blend in there and see where it fits together, so. So, where's that leave us for tonight? Now, Mr. Ballick said we wouldn't make a decision tonight and, and that's.
I didn't say we couldn't.
Yeah, I know, you didn't say we couldn't.
Well, we, we do need to make it soon because this, this issue is, the MOU Committee, I don't want to say we're stalled, but we're at this plateau where we need a number in order to keep moving forward.
Yeah, uh, we have two people not here tonight, obviously, with two empty chairs. They're, they're out of town because of Thanksgiving weekend and with, uh, out of town with families, some quite a ways away actually. So, um, unless the board is ready to do something tonight, personally, I'd like to just wait until there's seven of us here. I think that's more fair to everybody. I mean, I would not want to not be here when this decision was made.
So, you're thinking like December 4th?
Yeah, next meeting, yeah. That gives us a chance to adjust up a bit tonight too.
Yeah.
Be sure it's clear in our heads and we're all set. Nikki?
I would just point out that the first Monday is also the, um, isn't that the date of the, um, school board meeting?
No, maybe second.
Second one, okay, very good, because I just wanted, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't conflicting with that. Great, thank you.
Um, I was, you know, I, I didn't overload the board with information for tonight, but I'm wondering if I should give you the, the proposed capital improvement plan? Because, you know, one of the things the board could do and it's not saying, I'm not saying we should do this, is, is look at projects and, you know, and you could work with Jim then and say, well, you know, as we, you know, when the, when the library that hits the levy, you know, maybe you try to, you know, massage the, the other projects that are going on. The problem, as I mentioned, it isn't just the library that's going to be driving debt service. We're doing those two big, well, actually three big projects, two with the county and then probably doing Park Street for the hotel.
Yeah.
And so, the county wouldn't be happy with us, but, you know, you could possibly delay those projects or, you know, you know, work around that. So, you, so maybe you try to, you know, try to stretch out the projects a little bit as much as you can. So, I think I'll give you, I think I'll give you the CIP I'll have in front of you for the next meeting.
Okay.
Dad, could you also redo these numbers and include the real estate in there too, please?
Sure. Jim, could you do that, please?
Okay.
Jim will do that.
I could have asked him.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, is any, is anybody ready to make the decision tonight? Are we all waiting? Do you think we need to go December 4th and lock it down and get it done then?
Well, can we, so Jim, so this is an awesome spreadsheet for $5 million. Can we, can you do this for like $7 million or $8 million or?
I think Jim will do whatever you want.
You know, or, or you could just say how much for each million will this go increase?
That would also work.
Yeah, because I was going to ask for the 30,000 square, 35,000 square feet, so, but if you do the $7 million, that'll cover it.
But that's not, that's, it's not, I mean, it's, it's like 12 million, so I don't know how we're going to get to 35,000 square feet ever.
I thought that was the $8 million.
I think it was, I think it was eight. It was, I don't think it included all of the soft costs, but I think we were looking at.
Yeah, so I thought for $8 million, it was the 30-some thousand square foot building, but none of the soft costs.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, the sheet we got tonight says $8 million is 32,000 square feet. That does not include the land or soft costs, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
I guess the question I have too.
Yeah, so you have, you have to be clear to Jim, what, what are you, what are you asking for?
Well, hold on, I'm going to.
So, if, if, so the chart that, that Lisa and I did, which has the borrowed amount, square footage, and, you know, maybe Jim could do something like that, and then would you want to then have a, so what are you, what are you looking for? Looking for the average increase on an average house for each million decils up or?
That'd be cool.
I think it should be by year because I think that, I mean, if it was $200,000 this year, you know, or 200, from this year to next year, but if it's only 20,000 from this year to, or $20 per year or, hold on, let me calm down. If it was $20 this year to next year on your tax rate and then $30 the next year, I think that's different than saying it's $200, but knowing that's going to be 2023. I think that that seems to be an issue of how much each year it's going to go up as opposed to overall. And I think that, that will help explain to the public too of, oh, it's $20 this year. It's, over the next 10 years, it's $200 total. I think would be very helpful to be able to see that for the different dollar amounts.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to.
And it changes per year, like, you know, it's $20 for the first year and then the next year it's $70 and then the next year it's $20. So, it's like, you know what I mean? It's hard to say.
And that's where.
Just carry this around in your pocket.
And that's where if you want to give me a target. I can try to make. Make them, well, I'm sorry, it's actually supposed to be printed out on 11 by 17 paper, just trust me. I, glasses too. But if you, if, if the board wants to give me a target in terms of trying to keep the increase on an annual basis to a certain dollar amount, I can try to work within that.
And, and that's.
I can't promise you that I'm going to get it done, but I can target it to try to get to that point.
Okay. And that's what I was saying about the CIP. In some respects, the board could back into the number. You, you, Jim, you know, you tell Jim, we don't want for all debt to go up more than whatever on an annual basis. Well, then he can run that and then you can tell the board, well, this is how much you get, you get to spend. So, you may have to tell the county or somebody, we're not, we're going to delay that project for three or four years.
And that's generally how things happen when you want to.
We do, that's how we do the budget every year. You, you sort of, the board sort of gives me, I get some direction from you and we, we put things in and we delay things and.
Has there been any discussion on the Library Board about fundraising and what your target is for that?
We don't have a target set yet. We want to do the, um, the feasibility study to see what the community would uphold. But we've actually already had, um, a couple of neighborhood community committees come to us and say that they want to help with fundraising, that they're willing to help with sweat equity, that they're willing to do lots of different landscaping, that type of stuff. So, we've already reached out and talked with people in the community.
Good, so that process is in essence started then.
Yep.
And they envisioned starting a 501(c)(3) and getting really well organized.
Because I know when we did this library, and you probably heard me say this before, the Library Board at, the library was almost ready to open and they were told they had to raise X number of dollars. And that was a very poor way to, to handle.
We absolutely want to avoid that this time around.
Yeah, yeah. So do we, yeah, that was a nasty, a nasty surprise for the Library Board at that time.
And people still remember that, Jerry. I mean, I still get.
I still remember.
People chirping in my, in my ear about that. I'm like, I didn't even live here then. But it's still my fault, you know, because I'm on the village. I know.
So, does, does the board have a, have a number that you say, you're saying that?
What are these soft costs like you, you, you keep talking about? How much are those?
Well, that's, I think.
Well, we just thought. They just said between $35 and $60 beyond is $2.50.
Okay, so you $300 per square foot should get you the building and the soft cost approximately.
Okay.
Do we have an idea? Um, I think we authorized the spending for the feasibility study not that long ago. Any timeframe on when that's going to be done?
The, the Library Board's going to vote on their share in December and then that will go to the MOU Committee so, how, the next couple of months, Nikki? Yeah.
This kind of, we, we need to make a decision here, if I'm correct, right, on how much we want to fund before we can start that, that process? So, as you're waiting for us, we're probably waiting for you on a lot of things.
So, so Library Board, you're, um, are, are you guys at the, the $8 million number? That's, that's the number you want, right?
Right. I mean, I think we, it would help to at least see how that could play out, you know?
Yeah, I'd like to see what those numbers look like at 8 million. I, yeah, I mean.
Well, I think that was kind of Jim's instructions.
Because, yeah, because that, I mean, that's the dream, right? That's like, so, that's, that was the goal.
I, I would love to see how at, at that rate, then the, the, the village's mill rate compares to other local municipalities. Does it put us above them? Does it keep us in that same range? Are we still below? That, I, I think even though we're not trying to keep up with the Joneses, that's not the idea here where we know that we're in a competitive environment where, you know, people are looking, do they build here? Do they build somewhere else? Do they live here? Do they live some, somewhere else? And I, I think being comparable to them is a good, uh, good mindset to, to at least analyze from.
I would add, Kyle, when we're talking about taxes, so yeah, we're the third lowest mill rate. But when you add in all of the school referendums that we've had, we're actually the third from the highest overall taxes in Dane County. And we don't have any control over that today on this board, but just keep that in mind. It's not, it's not like our taxes are super low. Our taxes are the third highest when you put in the school rate.
Right, but it's a contribution too, right? Everybody voted for the.
Oh, I totally get it. I just want to make sure that, that you, that you realize that.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So, the direction to Jim is to have him run it at, at 8 million?
$8 million.
Okay.
And you want to see a million-dollar increment so that if you go up, if that's what would be added? Or if you go down, that's what you'd subtract.
Okay.
And how do we work the soft costs into that calculation too?
Well, so, I, well, 8 million, 8 million if you, is not, is not going to be enough to build a 32,000 square foot building at $2.50 a square foot. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta, you'd have to borrow more.
Or they could be responsible for the soft costs with their fundraising.
I don't, I, I hate to put it like that because that's sort of how, how this whole thing blew up 20 years ago.
I know, that's what, I'm being, I'm being.
Let's not put it that way.
But that might be a good goal of like, you know, let's say soft costs are like 1.5 million.
That might be a reachable goal for fundraising.
Well, right, it, it helps us when we do the feasibility study, you know, going back to the whole chicken and egg thing again. If we can tell whoever we eventually hire to do that feasibility study that we know that we're going to have about X dollars from the village, you know, this is our goal for what the library we want. How much can we?
You know, and I wonder.
How much can we raise and then we'll know.
I wonder fundraising, if we could, if we could put it to the community of the village board has voted on this amount to build a building and if you'd like the building to look awesome, give money. You know what I mean? Like, how much money the, the public gives depends on how pretty the building looks. I mean, I don't know. I'm thinking of the person that gives money. I might be willing to make sure it has nice furniture, it has nice furnishings. Is that easier to fundraise for?
That's how we did it, um, the feasibility study at my church. We just, we did one like a year ago and that was, we had to detail what we wanted to spend the money on and like how frequently we wanted the furnaces maintained and that kind of stuff. And that's how they came up with the.
I guess we'd find that out through the feasibility study.
Exactly, that's, that's.
Maybe, I'm always interested in how people think. Do they want to give toward the bricks and mortar? Or do they want to give toward the landscaping?
So, I can tell you for hospitals and that type of stuff, a lot of people donate more towards the furnishings and the pretty side of it than the bricks and mortar of it, um, just in general when we're doing construction costs, yeah.
You, you probably have to talk to the, the people that gave to the food pantry, the, the angel that gave all that money. Maybe there's another angel out there that will give you a bunch of money too. We're hoping that would happen.
I think his name is Steve Staton.
I wish. We wouldn't be having this discussion.
Jim, you want to contribute to the library?
Okay, so, you know what we'd like to have, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, and so, and Mr. Ballick has to leave. He gets to go to the county and do now the county budget, so. He gets poisoned twice tonight. So, anything else on this tonight or anything from the Library Board?
I was just going to make a, a quick comment. The library's going to be there for a long time and, uh, if it's a healthy library, then that's going to be part of a healthy village. And, uh, when marketing is, and marketing is really hard to quantify. It's really hard to quantify, did this advertisement work and so on? But when the, um, when people think about relocating their homes or their businesses to, um, Oregon, they're going to look at a variety of things and the library has got to be one of those things. It's, I'm sure there must be a picture of it in the, in the brochures and so on. And, um, so I, I would just like to say that a healthy library would, would be part of a healthy village. And I think an unhealthy library would, would not help much.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I think that's exactly what the board is too. I think we recognize that and we like, we know we have to have the amenities that are typical in Dane County to stay with other communities in Dane County. The board wants to do that and, um, I mean, that school referendum made a big. The board wants to do that, and, I mean, that school referendum made a big, big impact on that, and we want to do our part too, and, you know, we hope we have over the last several years, but it still comes down to how much can we do and, and still stay on the board? So, which is important going forward also, so. Any other comments?
Actually, just one thing that popped into my mind as you talked about, so we talked about the schools' impact on, on the tax rates. Is there a, a correlation? I know that the schools are supposed to be fifty percent more population by, I can't remember what the year was.
Twenty thirty.
By twenty thirty.
Two thousand more kids.
Does that additional tax revenue, obviously, we just built some new buildings and, and did some work there. It'd be interesting to understand, does that offset that extra growth? Does that offset the, the burden that the school district puts on the community?
No, because they're going to have another referendum in another year or two to build another school.
Correct. Next number.
Plus now those kids live actually in the village of Oregon.
Yeah.
So.
I just thought, you know, popped into my head.
Yeah, that development will be mostly in Pittsburgh. Yeah, some of the villages, but a lot of Pittsburgh. Anything else? Okay, so, we need to adjourn the library board, is that right?
Yes.
So is there somebody in charge of that, Jerry, Mary?
I'll make a motion that the library board adjourn. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Darling, you behave while I'm gone.
I will. I'll behave.
Don't pick a janitor.
Yeah, no, I won't.
Okay, well, nobody else-
I thought it's being the rookie.
Yeah.
That was my job, was being the rookie.
Yes, please. He is, he is five, five eight.
Yeah, that's, I just-
What, are you loading up on caffeine and Tom?
Uh, not so much tomorrow, but yes. Yeah. Okay, sounds good.
I know they would like to have a, like, yeah.
Just back up where we left off.
Yeah. Come on, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go to item five A. We have our village engineer here for that, and I would guess has been here as long as he'd like to be. So, five A. Five is discussion of village engineer and possible action. Item A, discussion, possible action, approval of resolution number seventeen dash thirty-eight, a resolution approving a west side developable, yeah, developable land analysis and method for calculating development contributions for future west side road improvement cost. So the recommended motion is to approve that resolution, so I'm looking for that motion, please.
So move.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, so that's, in our pack, I'm going to come to the microphone, Jason, and tell us what's going on here, so we're all stuck.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. President. Good evening, board. I know you're a little shorthanded tonight, but I thought what I'd do tonight is just go over the memo that I had put together, which is kind of the, the process for the new land analysis and cost for roadway improvements that we've developed working with the planner and village staff. Essentially, as land has developed and is increasing or in continuing to develop on the west side, there has been past agreements that have collected dollars associated with helping reconstruct some of your minor or major collector streets that, that host most of the traffic going west. Primarily, those are Netherwood Road, Jefferson, and Lincoln Road. Those may not all be entirely under the village control at this time, but at some point in the future, it'd be obviously planned that those become involved as part of a rebuilding those roads to accommodate the traffic. Several things that we've looked at historically in the past that was assessed or, or there were costs contributed to development based off of frontage of land on the road. Over time, those fees have been collected with certain developments, but some questions have come up if that was the most equitable way to do it, just because you could have a very small frontage but a large parcel of land, and then you could have a very shallow parcel which has a lot of frontage, and they're not necessarily equal apples-to-apples scenarios. So in reviewing how to move forward and come up with a actual methodology for this that the village can kind of develop, and then when development occurs, this can be presented and it'll be kind of predetermined what those costs might be. We started looking at some different scenarios. One was basically looking at traffic. Could we look at traffic as the basis for determining what these allocated costs could be for these future roadway improvements? The problem with traffic is it becomes very difficult to require a traffic study, and those traffic patterns change over time. Also, you have kind of an underlying basic traffic pattern that exists that aren't generated from the land being developed in those areas, traffic coming in and out of the village on those roads. So that was kind of one of the methodologies we looked at and kind of said, well, in theory, I think it would work, but we wanted to look at something that might be a little more practical, where we could say, let's just apply this and it would make sense. Front footage, I said, obviously, was something that had been done and, and was questioned. So we kind of got back to the idea of looking just at land area, assuming that every development would occur would have similar traffic developments based off of land area. The thing with land area, though, that we did have to consider was we took out undevelopable land, so those things that might be in wetlands or floodplains, and said, let's just eliminate those, because those aren't truly land areas that can be developed and sold off, so they aren't contributing to traffic either. So again, the road uses aren't getting used for those type of land pieces. Then what we did was we worked with the plan, the village planner, to look at saying, well, also, as land develops and these parcels develop, we do have land associated with right, right, right ways that are dedicated back to the village. We also have land associated with stormwater improvements that are required through the village ordinances in the county, and so those pieces were also taken out in addition to parkland. And so we kind of used a factor given to me by the planner of seventy percent of the remaining land was then developable with these other thirty percent pieces coming out. So once we knew what kind of was our targeted methodology and what items or amounts of land we wanted to look at, applying these costs to, kind of the next thing that we had to look at is, well, how do we split those costs up and attribute them back to those roadways particularly? So we started with a, a base roadway cross section, which is your standard, which is a, a collector street, and said we would just approve, improve all those roads theoretically down the line to the same standard. The village could then apply a cost to those, how much would it take to build this roadway from its current condition and upgrade it to this urban section, this collector roadway? And then what we also looked at was then applying, well, which parcels would apply to which road? So if you will, between Netherwood and say Jefferson, for example, we just equally divided the distance between the two and said all parcels south of Netherwood halfway to Jefferson then would apply to those, those costs with Netherwood, and then the lands north of Jefferson halfway between Jefferson and Netherwood then would apply south. Again, that was kind of detailed on the map and my memo of how those parcels would be laid out. So then we had, kind of had the land determination of how those splits would be determined, decided. The last thing that we really came up with is how much of the roadway would be attributable then back to these parcels? Obviously, it's not realistic to ask the developments to pay a hundred percent of those future roadway improvements, since, again, there's other uses and other costs associated with that. So the, the factor that we looked at applying with as part of this land analysis was fifty percent, saying essentially, in the future, when this roadway would be built, fifty percent of that cost would be a responsibility of the village, but then, obviously, the benefit of those improved roadways would lie with these development or parcels, if you will, and we felt that fifty percent was a good number that those could apply back to. So now we've really kind of put all the pieces of the puzzle together. The one missing piece was, when we looked at the entire roadway upgrades, the village has already been collecting money, so we really then had to factor in how many dollars have been collected to date, and then what was the difference? So how much would you need to collect in the future then to get to that fifty percent limit, crediting for what's already been collected? So what you see is, if you look at my memo, there's a table in there where you see we did a cost per acre kind of comparison for the three roadways, and just to note, for example, it's much higher for Netherwood, because there really hasn't been many dollars collected to date from development along that roadway. So as you see, obviously, there's a lot more development to occur in the future, hence there's more money to collect, which then pushes the dollar per acre up higher. But in, in some of the other scenarios, when you look at Jefferson and Lincoln, those dollars have been collected with those developments we've had historically, and so what you get is you get those monies applied, and so there's less money to collect in the future. I do want to thank village staff for going through and pulling a lot of this data, it's a lot of numbers, but again, it's, it's not, it's not an assessment, but what it is, is it's really kind of applying those land area values back and determining what those costs are for when annexations and/or, you know, developments agreements are wrote. So that's, that's what we came up with for the methodology and, and how we put together the memo, and kind of the approach that we took working with the planner and the staff. So I guess I just wanted to be here tonight to kind of review that, kind of let you know what we did and how we developed it, and then see if there was any specific questions that we can answer, hopefully, to make it clear.
Are there questions?
I don't think so.
No. No, we had this on the west side, where we considered the building of the Presbyterian Church, didn't we?
Mm-hmm.
We talked about-
Yes.
The same type of things as well.
I mean, when we, we were working on the Fleming Development, which is Bergamont. I first came here in nineteen ninety-nine. This was one of the exercises we went through, I explained that to Jason, that, that we were looking at an impact study, we look, you know, and we landed on frontage, and so we used that frontage assessment for all these years, but it was pretty easy, because the, those three subdivisions all bordered the two streets.
Yeah.
As you get into these other parcels, it's a little more complicated, and I, I think this is a, a better way of doing it. We haven't looked at it in almost seventeen years, so it was time to, to review it. We've never made the point that, we, we were saying to these developers that the money we were collecting, you are going to pay entirely for, you know, Lincoln, Jefferson, and Netherwood. We are always just looking to have at least a pot of money, whenever we do that, to, to dip into it, and then we'd obviously have to borrow for our side of it. So, I think it's, I think it's a fair way of doing it for both sides.
I, I will add two more comments quick. One, just to note, how we define which parcels were attributable and weren't are really in the sewer service area.
Right.
So, so just to note that there, there was a boundary of what parcels were included and which weren't, and that was just defined by what that sewer service area was. Also, to note that the dollars that we had estimated for the street reconstruction costs are twenty seventeen dollars, and what we did was, we did apply a construction cost index number to that, to kind of index it to today's cost. So as we're looking at these projects or, or developments coming onboard into the village, say, over the next maybe ten, fifteen, twenty years, what's going to happen is, well, what are the costs at that point? Well, we can go back to those construction cost index numbers and then inflate those costs to make sure that we're, we're recapturing those costs that we need for those reconstructions at that time. So again, those will obviously grow incrementally with inflation, and we just wanted to make sure that you understood that. If you're just collecting the dollars that you see in my memo today, you're going to fall short of that fifty percent, just because, you know, as, as those developments come on, things will be more expensive and things will cost more, but we have a method for indexing that, so just be aware that the staff was certainly seeking to make sure that this works well into the future.
Yeah, good point.
And it looks like the costs on all three, three roads were just over four million dollars.
Yes, and that was for, I think what I had here was, I think there, all the roads had, were a couple miles in length, so they were substantially long reconstructions.
Yeah.
And the other thing that I, I think I wanted to note here was that I had in my table here, I think Netherwood was attributable to two hundred and fifty-two acres of development. There's more raw acres in that, again, that's the net value. Jefferson Street was two hundred and sixty, and Lincoln Road was four hundred and twenty-four, so you can see there's some substantial numbers there, you know, in the nine hundred acre, thousand acre range of net to developable land, which is obviously a lot of development that could occur.
Are there questions or comments? Okay, thanks, Jason. Your presentation was very thorough, as was the stuff in our pack.
All right, well, thank you very much.
We have the motion to second to approve resolution seventeen dash thirty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Takes us back up to item four B, discussion, possible action regarding closing of tax increment district, district number two. Recommended motion is to adopt resolution number seventeen dash thirty-seven for resolution closing tax increment district number two.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
This is the Tiff District on the Business Park up by Wiskel and McDonald's, that area if you're watching.
And is this the one where we, we were able to collect some additional fees for affordable housing in the future?
Yes, yep, yep.
So, that was actually, part of my question is, because it's mentioned in the resolution that, that it can be, but do we need to put, that, that's what we want it for, or is that not something we can?
The, the board's already adopted a resolution for that.
Oh, when did we do that?
Couple months ago.
Oh. Glad I remember that. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We do a lot of things, it's hard to keep track of them.
Yeah, none of us remember everything, I don't think, except Mr. Grayson Lee Sin, the other stand.
Well, well, we were being, we were trying to be careful as we had to do this by the end of the year, there was a certain time period in-
Oh, okay. Well, because I was like, I know we've talked about it a lot, and so, does it need to be in there?
Yep.
All right, good, that was my question.
Anything else? So we have the motion to second to approve resolution seventeen dash thirty-seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, follow-up to the October twenty-sixth, South Main Street Drive aisle, Jefferson Street Parking Lot, public forum. More discussion will occur at a December board meeting. Item one, removing alternate side parking for Jefferson Street and Village Hall parking lots during two thousand seventeen eighteen winter due to construction except during snow emergencies, so you want, would like action on that tonight, right?
I'd make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
That, that was a request from the property owners on that side of the street, which makes sense.
And basically, that drive aisle doesn't work. U H A Health is not interested in making a change right now, and we, those of us at that meeting, I think, certainly respected their position.
Yeah.
So that, that's not going to take place.
And Jeff and I will have a lot more detail about it, and I was going to do it at the next meeting, but I think that's going to be a long meeting. I may actually hold off until the eighteenth.
Okay. Okay. And one comment I will make now is, the construction foreman for Jefferson Crossings made the comment that he has property in Reedsburg, I believe it was, and he said that he met, got to go to the property owners and they self-worked on the parking issue on their own, so there may be, need to be some of that downtown also, we will see. Okay, so we have the motion to second to remove alternate side parking for Jefferson Street and Village Hall during this next winter. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item D, discussion, possible action on change of agent at Quick Trip number seven thirty-one. The recommended motion is to deny the change of agent, Adam Larson at Quick Trip seven thirty-one. Need that motion, please?
I'd make that motion.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
And Kenny did reach out to Mr. Larson about the meeting, but he decided not to show up.
Yeah, okay. He's probably embarrassed.
Well, I spoke to him on two different occasions. As my email said, I spoke to him about the charge that he has pending through Rock County. He said he was aware of it, even though he put on the application that there were no pending charges. And so that charge that is pending, that isn't on CCAP yet, is substantially the same in duties that he's doing now. So I, you know, I just wasn't comfortable with signing the character reference as well, and I told him that, so.
Yeah, I certainly support that. We've heard that excuse before. So we have the motion second to deny that change of agent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that takes us to Item 6, Village Attorney, Village Administrator Report. Item A, discussion possible action on transfer of ownership of 200 North Main Street, which is a red brick property, to the Gary J. Gorman Legacy Trust. Recommended motion is to approve that Resolution 1739 for that transfer of interest in property.
I'll make that motion. Yeah.
So.
Is it eight or second?
Genesee the motion, Darlene, second.
Sounds great.
Okay. So do we need any comments here?
Matt's office prepared the resolution.
Okay.
It's just a legal matter.
I have had a few people ask me what's happening there, and if it's okay, just, you know, to quell the rumor mill. Rachel Sneeden is in our Rotary Club, and she made a presentation on this. And so they're not tearing down the house. Everyone calm down.
Oh, the house, yeah, they're actually, they were roofing it yesterday.
Yes, so folks have been concerned that they're somehow tearing down a historical home. No, Gorman has completely gutted the inside and is completely restoring it, and will be moving many of their offices in there, and then adding some parking for employees. So I think the house already looks better, and I think it's going to continue to look better. So it's always good to just, you know, get the information out there.
Yep.
The Facebook posts could now stop.
And that's what Gary Gorman does, he makes things better.
Right, yeah.
That's been good. Okay, anything else? So we have motion second to Resolution 1739. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Village has been paid by former police officer Lucas Shepok the money owed to the village, including attorney fees for a total amount of $1,476.66. So thanks to people responsible for that.
Yeah, thanks to Matt and Holly for working on that. The board for supporting that as well. So he ended up paying a lot more than he needed to, that's for sure.
Yeah, had to pay attorney fees too, right?
That's right.
Yeah. Item C, discussion possible action regarding waiver of conflict for Gordon Fleisch copier lease. Recommended motion is to approve that waiver. So we need that motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
We are negotiating a new lease with Gordon Fleisch. Gordon Fleisch's attorney now works for Stafford. And so we're using a different attorney to negotiate on our behalf, and it's not high level negotiations. We're just going through the lease, which we'll probably come to the board possibly in the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
A new lease for five years, a new copier lease for five years.
Okay. Any questions on that, comments? So we have the motion second for Village Administrator, sign the waiver of conflict for the Gordon Fleisch copier lease. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7, approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight, amount of $459,375.1.
I'll make that a motion.
Thank you.
We have to, yeah, okay.
Second.
Okay. Are there questions? Okay, we have motion second to approve vouchers tonight. Roll call, please.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Stateon?
Yes.
Bernier?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 8, Community Input. Anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board? Judy, welcome.
Thank you.
It's getting to be the holidays. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who helped out with the lights up two weekends ago, so we got the, most of the holiday lights up. And also, a couple of things that we're going to be doing this weekend is shop small, so we'll shop our local stores. There is a brochure that orders inches off. So please shop small, shop often, shop big, you know. One of our stores has 25% off, 10% off. Let's patronize our stores if you can. Thank you. The other thing, we're having water on Friday night at 5:03. Light that tree that we have in Waterman to the fire. We just asked that you bring, you might even stay overnight at the fire station because K-9 breakfast. So please come and support the K-9. That's December 2nd, from 7 to 12 on Saturday morning. So.
Maybe the police station can host the reindeer.
Santa's coming in on the fire truck on Friday night.
Okay.
So we don't know the rest of it yet.
Okay.
It's a secret.
Details to be.
Details, the kids got to come and find out, so. I'm okay with that, chief. He's going to be flipping pancakes, right?
Actually, I was told I have to be the greeter.
Oh, okay. Come meet the chief, as well as the K-9.
Aren't you the chief? I was told.
I'm part of the committee.
He's working on a job at Walmart.
Maybe he's not a very good pancake for her.
Yeah, apparently, they don't like my cooking abilities, I don't know.
I didn't say anything, thank you.
Actually, I made the scrambled eggs last year, so.
Yes, you did, they're good.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
But a lot of people will be there volunteering, too. We are short a couple volunteers for Saturday morning, so if anybody wants to volunteer, we'll take that, too. But otherwise, please come this weekend and next weekend, and have a fun time. So yes, so yes, anybody who's volunteering will get to work hard.
Thanks, Judy. Item 9 is Proclamations and Announcements. Item A, Board Comments. Anyone tonight? Looks like there's none staff comments.
Just remind you, again, people that brush pickup is ended, and leaf collection is ongoing. And then, I know Piggy's got something she wants to.
So I just wanted to let you know that Accurate Appraisal is going to be out in and around Oregon next week. So if people see them around, or questioning who is around their home, it could very well be Accurate Appraisal.
Okay, it's good to know.
Yeah.
I'm sure I'll be getting calls.
I'd let the girls know on there, too.
We're still looking for members on Historic Preservation Commission. And then the third thing was the paving of North Alpine Parkway and Bike Trail. If you've noticed, that developer, the contractor is paving this week for Ladopolis. And thank you to the Police Department for putting out to sign, knowing the fine people of that. And then the upcoming meetings are December 4th. We're still shooting for a special meeting on the 11th to talk about the lift station analysis on the east side of Highway 14. And then we'll be bringing back the food pantry request on the 18th of December.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, any staff? Nope, okay. Go to Item 10, Communication and Miss Land's Business. Item A, Police Reports.
Yeah, we'll go through these as usual, but you can see, we're not getting any slower. We continue to be very busy and continue to have our usual issues with OWIs and domestics seem to be the top of our list. So any questions on those, I'd be happy to answer.
Brian, is that typical for a community our size, or do we have more of those things than others?
I think it's pretty typical, quite honestly, yeah. I remember when I was part of the other community, it was, we always had an uptick in domestics, depending on how the Packers did. So we don't seem to have that issue here, which is, I'm grateful for.
Okay, well, good.
Are there questions on any of the reports?
Brian.
Again, we appreciate this, Brian. They're good reports that keep us appraised of what's going on. They're easy to read and to use, so that's good. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Item B, Discussion Possible Action on Mobile Message Board Sign. Recommended motion, Approval of the Purchase of a Fermac PCMS 4880 Mobile Message Sign from Decker Supply, in the amount of $13,895.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Something Jeff has brought forward.
So Jeff and I have been talking about this probably for a good, over a year. We, like, even with the thing with our North Alpine Parkway, we would have had, we can't keep asking the Police Department to sign up. We just, we should have had our sign up. It's, Jeff and I talk about it all the time, like, for example, we would have had probably the sign up in Triangle Park this past week, just alerting people about, you know, that winter parking regulations are going to, we're going to use it all the time. And we would, it would have been great to have it on Jefferson Street this past summer during construction.
Yeah.
So that's when, yeah, so that's when Jeff and I really started thinking about how to purchase it. And he's willing to, he's willing to dip into his 2018 funding to do it, because that's how badly he wants it. He wants to order it and get it here, and we want to start using it.
Yeah.
And obviously, we have a water break, main break.
Yeah.
Put it up. It's going to be great. People need to know what's going on.
Yeah.
People do not like surprises, we've learned over the years, so.
And I will say, it's not that we don't want to give you our sign.
No.
But our sign is just not meant for that type of use.
No, it's not. And Jeff mentioned this in the, oh, no, 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 I'm not saying it, no, no. No, I understand that, but I just want to say, our sign is, I mean, the battery just
doesn't last that long, and it's not that big, anyway.
So if it's out there for two or three days, you only get about 24 hours of notice, and
then we got to take it back and charge it, and then take it back out. So it's not very effective.
And that's why, on the back page of Jeff's memo, we break out allocation between the General Equipment Fund, Public Works, and Water and Sewer. All those different areas will be using it, so.
Yeah, I think it's a good step in the right direction, for sure, so.
Yeah, we need it, yep.
Okay, spread motion second to approve purchase of that mobile message sign. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yep, thank you. Item C, Discussion Possible Action, Bankruptcy Writeoffs. Recommended motion, Approve bankruptcy writeoffs of $115.99 for Amy Lewison and $271.52 for Melissa and Sean Yingling.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Discussion Possible Action, Dane County Purchase of Services Agreement. Recommended motion to approve the Dane County Department of Human Services Purchase of Services Agreement for 2018. The grant is for a total of $71,144. Need motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Rachel?
So this is, I believe, the 37th year that we've been able to get this grant from Dane County, support services at the senior center in four different areas, one being nutrition, the second being case management, the third being our Adult Day program, and lastly, targeted case management, which is aimed at people on Medicaid. Numbers are up a little bit this year, in part due to the Ziggy's program. It's pretty, very similar to the contracts we've had for the last 36 prior years.
Yeah, I remember signing those. Not all, not that many.
Not all 36, right.
You get a lot, Steve, though.
Yeah. That law just seems like it sometimes. Any questions? So we have motion second to approve the Dane County Department of Human Services Purchase of Services Agreement for 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, to review of building permits, impact fees, connection fees. Any questions there or comments from staff?
Just one comment, you can see, we're a little behind on single-family permits, but in actual value, we're about $4 million down, and I think, you know, we've determined, obviously, that's because Jefferson Crossing, the $5.5 million.
Yeah.
So, you know, I saw like a broken record, we just, you know, the way the state handles our taxes, and we, and when our building a new library, we need to keep growing. We need to keep increasing our cesspit.
Any questions on any of those things? So item F, Discussion Possible Action on Setting Interest Rates for Advances. The recommended motion is to do so, have 0.75% for 2017. So need a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
This is what we charge the funds that we advance money to. I know I reported always asset every year, that's why we, it's an internal accounting thing we do.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, Discussion Possible Action, Approval of Peoples United Methodist Church Facility Use for 2018 Elections. Recommended motion is to approve that form in the amount of $600 for four elections in 2018, same price as 2017. Can we vote if we're Methodist?
Yes. I was going to say.
I know, it just, we can put it back. You know, you don't really get any benefit.
Yeah.
I tell you what, well.
Well, we do, I mean, we do kind of.
You know what we do?
We don't personally.
Yeah, we don't personally.
We don't personally benefit from this.
If Matt was here, he'd probably go both ways on it. We'll just, we'll put on the next agenda.
But can three people approve it? If everybody else sustains?
We would have, we'd have four.
Yeah.
We'd have four, we'd be okay. Three of you would have.
Oh, do?
Darlene has been Methodist Church for a long time, too.
Oh, I didn't know that, excuse me.
We would have a majority.
So let's just vote tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as we're not getting personal.
You're not getting personal.
Matt's not here, no, we get no personal benefit, so.
We're not getting money from him.
Okay. Yeah, don't tell him.
I mean, if anything, we're giving our money to the church, it's not like we're getting, you know what I mean?
Yeah, right.
We're not, we're not like.
Matt would, this is what Matt would say.
Getting ahead.
Same thing you do is don't vote, but he said, there's no conflict per state law.
Yeah.
So I would just go and do it. You're right, we can't, we can't get it passed in.
Yeah. So we need that motion?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we're all in trouble.
Yeah.
H, Discussion Possible Action, Appointment of 2018-19 Election Workers. We need that motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
I would just thank all those folks for being election workers.
Yeah.
And a lot of folks of us who serve on the board used to be election workers, but